Okay, well, good afternoon, everybody. Thank you so much for joining us. It is a somber day, September 11th, and we're incredibly thankful to have law enforcement here with us. We're also joined by the organizers of Pride Fest and many others of the public and our staff. We're thankful that you're all here today. The purpose of our meeting today is to have a bit of an after-action report. For those that are in the military or familiar with the military, usually there is a bit of an after-action after any exercise to determine what can be done better, what was done well, and then how can we improve in the future. We know that Pride Fest has now come and gone in Douglas County. I'll just say as one commissioner, I'm incredibly thrilled and grateful, particularly to law enforcement, that there were no injuries that I'm aware of, no fatalities, nothing of an immediate or really significant public safety concern. And I think from a public safety standpoint, we're very grateful for the work that you put in. I really want to commend Pride Fest as well. I know the team is behind me. You guys are welcome to join us anywhere or wherever you'd like, but we're very thankful to each of you as well. We know that it's been a year and a half of intense planning and hard work. I hope you guys got a little bit of rest and refreshment in the midst of all of this. But, you know, I was there for a big part of the day. I know Commissioner Thomas was as well. From our perspective as a Board of County Commissioners, the goal was to balance our constitutional right to freedom of expression with protecting kids. That's why we changed our facilities policy to ensure that there would only be G-rated, family-friendly performances at our facilities. And I really have to say hats off to Pride Fest because you accomplished that. You did a great job. What I saw, it was not there for the drag show performance, but an individual or performer that was nothing nude, nothing pornographic, bright wigs, great costumes, great songs, but nothing lyrics-wise or otherwise. That would be anything other than G-rated. Always thrilled in a public space that people are able to express themselves. And we know that people showed up that had opinions, and that's okay. I think we welcome opinions. We don't always like how those opinions are expressed, but I know that may be a part of what we discussed today. We do have an executive session set up, so if at any time if the board wishes to go into executive session to talk about specific physical security measures, we can certainly do that. And I'll look for a prompt for our group here if there's interest in doing that. So with that, I'll turn it over to my colleague, Commissioner Thomas.
Thank you. I'd like to thank everyone for being here. Having been with the State Patrol for many years, we often, after a big event, would get together and look at what happened and what could we do better next time, and what can we learn from this. I was there before the drag show was scheduled from 5:00 to 7:00. I saw nothing. I told you all I would be there to watch. I saw nothing that was questionable. I thought, I saw kids laughing. There was a juggler. There was a ventriloquist. There were dancing, fully clothed. There was nothing that I thought was questionable. So you all delivered what you said you were going to deliver. So thank you for what you did. And I also want to thank law enforcement. I think it was Lieutenant Brian Murphy was there, trying to figure out how to handle the situation when it happened. And he would come and tell me what was going on. And I wasn't there to tell law enforcement what to do at all. I was there to make sure that the contract regulations were followed, which they were. I applaud the sheriff's office. I did not see any violence, any confrontations take place. Afterwards, I was approached by many people who demanded to know why the sheriff's department didn't drag those people out. And it was a call that I think was well-made, because if you had started to try to move people out, I think the possibility of people being hurt would have been increased. And we didn't want any of that to happen. So I think that you all did a great job, and I'd like to thank you for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Thomas. Sheriff Weekly.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'm here with several members of my command staff. And as the elected sheriff, I recognize that it's my responsibility to serve all citizens. And we, as an organization, do not tolerate any type of discriminatory policing. And that starts with me. We are nationally-recognized, triple-crown-accredited agency, and we are nationally-recognized as one of the finest sheriff's offices in the entire country. Over the last several weeks, it's been inferred by some that the sheriff's office, along with Castle Rock Police, didn't do their jobs because of politics or personal relationships. That could be, there's nothing further from the truth. The safety of everyone at Pride Fest is my responsibility as the sheriff, and I don't take that lightly. We were prepared for every contingency at that event, which had a lot of publicity, as you know, prior to the event. We were prepared for everything from an active shooter to explosive devices to riot conditions and mass arrests and everything in between. I told my command staff, I wanted zero tolerance to anyone breaking the law. We had a chief deputy on-site from my office. We also had a chief deputy from the district attorney's office on-site if we needed to for any legal guidance that we might need. At the end of the day, and it's already been mentioned, to my knowledge, nobody got hurt. De-escalation was the mission of the day, and there was a lot of charged emotions out there. And I think we were very successful at doing that. We worked closely with the private security from Pride Fest for that de-escalation. We did not have to send any deputy sheriffs in and riot gear to put hands on people in front of children. And I think that's a very good thing. The Douglas County Sheriff's Office strives for perfection. Are we perfect in everything we do? Absolutely not. Can we learn from this event and try to do better? Absolutely, we can do that. We already made some plans for modifications of our ops plans moving forward. But again, I want to stress that at the end of the day, we did our jobs, and I think we did them very well. We do have some ongoing criminal investigations that I won't go in-depth on, but everything is not resolved at this point. And when those investigations are brought to fruition, we will bring that forward.
Well, and pretty minor issues at that, as far as I know. I don't want to opine any further than that, but thank you for providing that. And again, if there are specific issues that we'd like to...
Yeah, I just wanted to second what the sheriff said. The sheriff's office was working hand-in-hand as the chief of security for Pride. We worked hand-in-hand. The de-escalation policy worked as it was supposed to. And I know there are a lot of people out there, you know, calling and saying, hey, why didn't the sheriff's office die then? It's because we were working together to keep peace and safety for the families and children that were there. That was the top priority. Anything else, say second. So I want to call out publicly here on the record, the sheriff's office and Pride Fest worked together hand-in-hand to deal with what we were dealt, and we did the best possible we could with that situation.
Thank you for that. So I also want to acknowledge Jimmy Graham, who's in the room from Abel Shepherd. And I'll just say, occupying the space I occupy, as a father, a Republican, a member of the LGBTQ community, a person of faith, I was doing a lot of shuttle diplomacy that day between a lot of the different groups. And I consider you all friends and colleagues. I really do. And for those that don't know each other, what I do know about Jimmy Graham is he is a strong man of faith that is out there trying to protect churches, protect families, protect people in our community. And I believe good intent on Jimmy Graham and those that have worked with him. And he's worked in our county in the past. I remember the STEM shooting very significantly, where you were at almost every single meeting, trying to make sure that you could find a way to help keep kids safe. So I know we greatly appreciate that. The reality is that reasonable people and reasonable people of faith disagree on this issue. And so I think in a public facility, we welcome that difference of opinion and expression of difference of opinion, as long as you're not preventing others from being able to share their views. So I wasn't thrilled that some of the view was blocked, but I get that. And I think that, you know, when you had the conversation, you moved along. We also have members of parasol patrol that also sometimes block views, and that's a process that we may want to talk about as well. For me, I'm a constitutional guy. I support the freedom of speech. And I think whatever is to be viewed publicly, we should all have an opportunity to see that, if you choose to bring your families there. But, Art?
As coacher sheriff, I'd like to thank you for your work. I didn't even realize what was going on outside. I had no clue until Michael told me. But I would like to correct one statement. When you say no one got hurt, no one got physically hurt. Our children were hurt. Our children were injured. Our children and adults were traumatized. That is a form of injury and hurt. And I'd like to be sure that we are clear on when you say no one got hurt, that is not true. I am still traumatized from the incident. I know several of the parents and children are still working through it. So let's be conscious of when you say things, no one got hurt, no one got physically hurt. There's emotional harm that has been inflicted upon us in our community.
Yeah. Well, and I'll just say, I know, and I know the Board of County Commissioners knows, that Pride Fest has worked for over a year to try to make this G-rated, family-appropriate, an outstanding series of performances. I saw members of the faith-based community there affirming churches. The Libertarian Group was there. I mean, there were really a wide array of diverse groups, and you worked hard on that. So I think when we see our media run with a seven, 10, 15-day story, and the focus isn't about your good work, it's about other things, that can be deeply hurtful. And I certainly recognize that.
I think one thing that's important to call out is, yes, freedom of speech is paramount. It's in the Second Amendment. It's the freedom of religion. It also includes separation of church and state. And we have to consider that the speech that was being said, said to protect the children from us, from the LGBTQ community, and those lies about us being groomers, about us being a problem for children, they inspire violence. They have all over the country. There's a lady a couple of weeks ago, shopper, having a pride flag. It inspires violence. And when you get to the lie, that's being given a platform, that lie could have very easily escalated to violence that day. It was thanks to the sheriff's office putting in their good work of de-escalation. It was thanks to the pride community maintaining their composure. Because, yes, while those protesters did not start any violence, by saying that we're groomers, by getting in people's faces and saying that we are criminals, that we should be arrested for having children there, that lie in and of itself could have gotten people, sheriff's officers, children, families, killed that day if anyone had set off. So we've got to stop throwing matches at a powder keg and learn when to say, you know what, your free speech stops at the point where it puts lives at risk. Because people could have died that day, and it was only the cooler heads prevailing that prevented that. And I want to make that crystal clear.
Well, thank you for that, Mike. And you were one of the cooler heads. Jimmy?
For the record, how would that have happened if you weren't armed? Because I saw the knife attached to your backpack. In reality, when we came and simply stood and said, stand and protect children, Jesus loves you, and so do I. Just because you're scared doesn't make me scary. I can stand wherever I want on an open event. You belong here as an invitation. That means me, too. That means I have rights in this county as well. I was there. You were there. Laura, you were there. I didn't see your kids there. I didn't see your grandkids there. That's okay. You have the right to do that. But I have a right to stand as a man in self-control. I asked these men, if I'm going, you're invited. If you're going to stand in self-control, then you can come with me. And they did. So 70-plus, I've heard 70, 100, I didn't count, many people, many men and women, by the way, all of a sudden, there's men and women again, and it was just men allowed to. Men and women, your constituents in this area stood and said, we disagree with past years of indecent performance, of, yes, grooming children to tip sexual performance, as in, this has happened. This is on record, guys. Come on, what are we doing? Right? We love to sit down. You know what I'm talking?
Wait, wait, wait. No, no, I'm sorry. I thought the first amendment allowed somebody to...
We're going to have one at a time. The purpose of this is to be an open dialogue.
So what dialogue says, because I was invited, not that this man, is that when you said, you're invited...
Hey, Jimmy, I'm going to ask you to leave if you cannot be professional, respectful to the people in this room. I think, once again, what we're trying to do in this room is foster a spirit of peace and conversation and a way to move our county forward. So let's try to keep emotions calm here and avoid the personal attacks. I respect exactly where you're at. I respect where you're at, sir.
A personal attack.
But what you just said is that somehow there was not a G-rated performance that you were part of, and you're bringing up things from your...
You have them.
Yeah.
You said, listen, on September 11th, you mentioned the military. That's what got me in my truck, right? And this whole recognition of this, recognition of this day, right? And there's a, we're going to learn. There must be room for truth in this conversation. There must be, okay? You said, people, Art, I agree with you. People were harmed. Children were harmed, right? Psychologically, for many years, you're grooming and letting this. And there are ongoing investigations. You're saying this was just this huge success. There was sexual assault charges. There are physical assault charges. There's a felony assault on a senior. There are investigations going on. How many by us? Zero. You know why? Because we didn't do anything. We stood where we stood. You guys invited this and funded it. You're a part of this. Not saying you're at fault. I'm not, okay? But I get an opinion, too, and there must be room for the truth. That is, that is my piece. Sheriff, excellent job. Police Department, excellent job. There were assaults going on. Perhaps they weren't seen and no one was arrested. But to say this was a success is an absolute failure. I will stand for the children and the grandchildren in this county, period, right? Not an assault on individuals, but on indecency. It can't be, I get to stand, at least for now, it's a free country, and I get to stand as a man and say, I disagree. We're not escorted out. We left when we were ready to leave. We were invited to stay. You asked us to leave, invited us to stay. Brother, thank you for being a professional. Thank you for being a provider. Okay, you were. You did not.
Jimmy, thank you for that, sir.
So I want to, I mean, we're obviously going off the rails here and into rehashing things. But I want to make something very clear. There is a First Amendment. There's also manner, place, and method and time restrictions on the First Amendment. And it is clear at the fairgrounds that protests are designated to a specific area. Knowing those rules applied, a group of individuals, I think led by this man, but I don't know, decided to thwart those rules in a way to try and interfere with a lawful presentation of entertainment. I don't think a single person sitting here would have permitted or would think that a protest designed to end-run the rules of the fairgrounds that interfered with, say, I don't know, the county fair, the main, the performance at the county fair, and prevented people from watching it, prevented it from going forward. I don't think anybody sitting here would say, well, you know, that's just people having difference of opinions, and that's the First Amendment. There is a reason we have at the fairgrounds, time, manner, and place restrictions on it. This group of individuals decided to ignore that, that they were above the law, that they got to do whatever they want. And then they come in here, and he throws accusations about us. I heard the word groomer come out of his mouth at us, and then pretend that that's just nothing. I mean, this, it's not a productive use of our time to rehash this, not why we wanted to have this meeting. We wanted to talk fundamentally about how we move forward and how we can address security to keep our right to have this event going forward. Because he has a right to protest. There's a protest zone. He knew it. They intentionally decided to bypass those rules because they think they're above the rules. And when they were instructed by the sheriff's department to leave, they did not. They stayed and remained and interfered until the drag show started, which apparently, and I thought the whole point of this presentation was, was for them to protect kids from the drag show. But the second the drag show started, they all got up and left. Like, I mean, to the extent that that was, that was the motive, it actually seems that the sole motive was to stop the drag show from happening at all. And when that failed, they all left because they did what they intended to do. So I'd like, you know, we, obviously, there's a lot of emotions running around. Obviously, he doesn't like it when I stand up and block his view, try and interfere with his right, as he shouldn't, just like we didn't like it when he stood up and tried to interfere with our right to have an event. There's obviously a ton of emotion. It's not a productive use of our time to litigate this part of it, right? We have a right to have a performance, a drag show. We have it. We did everything we were asked to do. To present this in a family-friendly way, we complied with everything. We worked with the sheriff's department. We worked with county commissioners. We worked with the fairground staff to make this a success. And what we would like to do, and what I think the effective thing move forward, is to discuss the future of Pride as far as ways to prevent this type of interference with our right to hold an event from happening in the same way that we would expect that if a protest interfered with a rodeo at the county fair, or any, or any kind, or a church group, that there would be discussions about how to prevent that from happening. Again, we're not asking for special treatment. We're asking to be treated like everybody who uses a fair.
So I'm going to invite our county attorney and probably the sheriff's office to provide some of the legal background to hopefully explain basically where we're at from a facility standpoint.
Can I just add one thing?
Ma'am, so we're going to have our county attorney.
Well, from the standpoint of anything, talking about policy or anything about security or safety, I think we want to go into executive session, wanting to do that, which means that we would leave this room and go to a Friday. Sure. To the, to the extent that we would talk about any changes to policy or anything along that, we would want to go into executive session, see how we would, how would we address this or any protest at the fairgrounds, because we are, we are making policies not only for your organization, but for all organizations using that. Historically, there has been a place for, for protests, that a place for protests and a place for gathering signatures, which has existed at multiple events. That same existed here. So I think that's where we're at as far as policy goes. With regard to anything else from the sheriff, I'll defer to them. But I think the sheriffs made their statements regarding this.
Well, and maybe to be, to help guide the discussion, and this is my understanding, so I would ask for just an open dialogue. And I'm not a huge fan of executive session. If we all want that, I'm fine doing that. But I'm here to serve the people of this community and make sure we have an open and clear conversation. We may not all agree, but I hope there is a zone of agreement going forward. Now, my understanding is that free speech, we allowed all members of the public who wanted entrance into the facilities to come. At one point in the drag performance, I believe those that were protesting were invited to stand. And they did stand. And then there was a bit of a half an hour standoff. The conversation was reached, and then those that were protesting eventually...
They were invited to take their shirts off, get it over with, and leave, were my exact statements. And they did not. If they saying, oh, well, we were invited to do that. Yes, you are also invited to leave. So you can't have it both ways.
I have a lot of video of us being invited to stand.
And the one thing, I want to clarify one thing. Not everybody who wanted to come in to Pride Fest was allowed to come into Pride Fest. There was a group of small-minded, mask-wearing, vigilante, Proud Boy, whatever you call those types of people, who were appropriately, when they came marching down the hill, directed to the protest site, because that's what that zone is for. And that is exactly what should have happened here. The sole reason to do this, which, I mean, honestly, Greg Queens would be a little impressed by the big reveal that had been planned here for these protest t-shirts. You know, the whole point of that was to avoid that regulation, was to avoid being instructed by a guy with the bow tie. Could we announce him? Oh, my name's John McHugh. I'm legal counsel for Castle Rock Pride. Thank you.
I think it's important to mention that also, before any of the events happened at the amphitheater between 3:00 and 5:00 p.m., I had entered the facilities at about 2:15 p.m. on that Saturday. Within 15 minutes, when I was sitting down watching the chair performance, Eli Bazan, the head of parasol patrol, stood in my face and said, if you're doing anything, I will get you thrown out. That was an act of intimidation. I have this on video. So to say it's just one-sided is not having a fair, honest conversation.
You're not a child, ma'am. You're not a minor. You're an adult. No, you're an adult. You can handle it. We've endured this talk.
Why are you asking me if I can endure it?
No.
You're not, you're not going to have a back-and-forth debate on your...
I'm, I'm sorry. I just would like to refocus this conversation. I am wondering, I would love to hear again the purpose of this meeting. I would like to hear who is considered public and who is considered part of this meeting. And then I would respectfully ask you to move to executive session if we feel like the conversation is not moving forward, based on who is here from the public versus part of the meeting. And I don't know where I stand on that either, sir. So I would, I would appreciate just having that, understanding what the purpose of the meeting is, and then making sure we're moving forward in that direction, if you don't mind.
Yeah. So I believe that the... Yeah, so I believe that the purpose of this meeting is to have an open dialogue about Pride Fest. And hear from all parties about how as a county, we can come together and do what's best for the four hundred thousand citizens. That we represent, but then also focus forward on how future events um may look. Um and so I'll defer to our county attorney in terms of what executive session would look like.
Uh executive session, when we go into that, we would have to speaking about investigation or security measures. So if it's just general policy or or uh rehash of the events or history about it, that wouldn't be covered.
No, and I I I don't think that that's that's really any kind of productive use of anyone's time, I I I've been to several of these meetings now. Um and it's the same, everybody's saying the same thing over and over and over and over and over again, it's 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 a really. A unfortunate series of events, but I I do think that there are some legitimate uh um questions about. Uh that we would like and discussions that we would like to have with uh sheriff's department, fairgrounds about. Uh changes to security um and and specific security issues that we could address in order to help. Prevent this from happening again, because I think everybody would agree that prevention is better than than reaction. And that if we, you know, if that uh, you know, whether whether it's the 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 people who decided to stand up. Who who felt like they were being intimidated, uh certainly, I saw children crying uh in the sta- you know, in the stands. Uh in in response to these people standing up and looming over them. Um and 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 very strongly sending a message that they and their community are not welcome here, uh you know, I. I I I I think avoiding the kind of violence uh um potential for violence is is really what everybody wants. Um and I think that there are some discussions that we can have productively about how we can kind of uh address that. It's hard to have those conversations about how to prevent uh and the best ways to prevent protests with the people who are intending to protest. Uh in that space.
So I think after you you make those comments, what I kept thinking about that day is that. Um Red Rocks is owned by the city and county of Denver, Jeff, is that correct? And they have a sunrise service every Easter there, so what would happen if a group of atheists came in? And stood up and stopped that longtime famous sunrise service? What would have what would have been done, how would that have been prevented? Because maybe we can learn something from what Denver does, so that something like this doesn't happen again, because I think. Having been there and watched and been told there was a place for protesters. To have these protesters standing there and stopping the show for thirty minutes seemed inappropriate to me. And I'm not saying the sheriff's office should have done something different, I'm not, I think that this is a moment for prevention for next year. So that they can put on their show and not have a disruption.
Sheriff's office or county attorney wanna speak to that?
I will say, I I'm just amazingly impressed with the fact that the sheriff's office had a D A on the line. The fact that there was a legal situation that required a legal answer, they referred to that and then took guidance from the D A's office, who isn't here at the moment. Is is as impressive a a plan as I can think of in that situation. Because in a situation like this, there's all kinds of different legal questions that could come up, and the fact that they had prepared like that, it did consult an attorney at the time. As best spot on as possible, and I believe that some of the facts that were addressed with this, and please correct me, I don't wanna speak for the the sheriff's office. Was that the uh fact that there were individuals who were invited to to make a protest when they was known, they were in the uh inside the facility.
Bye, Captain Wyatt, or Chief Matt, we'll touch to comment.
My name's Joel White, I just took over the charge of this event and wrote an operational plan and. Met with organizers of the event, mainly with Michael. And we spent a lot of time on the phone, a person talking about um the rules uh of the event. The um it was a one page set of rules that. Base that it was at the county fairgrounds that people had to comply with. And that um there were certain things we couldn't couldn't stop, when being open carry. So we kind of worked with those rules and worked with the event staff to um come together. Biggest thing, we we spent a lot of time in talks was um that we were gonna come in 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 shirts, and we knew that. Knew that ahead of time, and it didn't, it wasn't prohibited by the event. It's a message on t-shirts. The intel I had, we did not know that they they were gonna stand in front of the um. The show itself and uh prevent that show from happening. I think when that happened, we worked largely um spent a lot of time talking about de-escalation. Um conversations on how to how to prevent this, is really truly the last thing we wanted was um. A large police presence coming in and um traumatizing uh already kind of difficult situation. So we talked a lot about de-escalation and then the steps thereafter de-escalation, which was. Let's try to de-escalate it, if they break the rules, let's have a conversation with them to leave, and that conversation went back and forth. On and off for about approximately thirty minutes, uh from the time they entered to the time uh they finally left the event. Um it it went well, uh from our perspective, and I think that marching in. Members of the sheriff's office in sort tactical gear would have further traumatized children and um. It was our goal from the get go to allow the event to take place successfully and move on, which it in fact did. So that was really the crutch of everything that we had. The district attorney, uh Clint McKenzie was on site and um was in constant negotiations with our patrol. Command staff as to what was, when there was a law violation, when there wasn't. And at times, unfortunately, um we were like, you can stay and watch, where the event coordinators would say, you can stay and watch. That that stopped that process of de-escalation to trespass, if that makes sense. So it really prohibited that, it wasn't, it wasn't, it's nothing on on you folks at all, it was just, it's kind of reset the clock. And so we were pushing at that event to, okay, we had the de-escalation, if they're breaking the rules, violating. You know, the rules of the of the festival, then at that point, we'd ask them to leave, and then that stopped. There was a stopping point for that, where like, you don't have to leave, you just have to get out of the way. Again, conversations were happening in the background between Michael, Lieutenant Murphy. And Jimmy Jimmy Graham from Ava Shepherd, to try to get this to a a point where we didn't have to march in. Uh members of the sheriff's office and start moving. So that's, that's ultimately what I take, chief.
Yeah, I just uh just a couple of comments, um we've had past pride events. There was two off duty deputies that were hired for this event. Everybody else that was at the at the fairgrounds that day was there because of the foresight of the sheriff to know. That this was extremely a heated topic, and and it's and it's evidenced by um just by what we've heard this afternoon. And and rightfully so, I'm very passionate about what it is that 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 you believe. We are in a position as law enforcement, that we enforce the law. You don't force people's opinions, you don't, w- w- we have to enforce the law. So a crime has to occur before we can take action. And to the 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 captain's point, um we had a protocol set and and Michael. I I have to tell you, um working with you was fantastic. Because you have just been very, very communicative with the captain. And and how it is that we make this as peaceful as an event as we possibly can, knowing. That it's that it's a heated topic, knowing that there's gonna be people that disagree with what's happening. Your, I I guess your grace in some of that um ebbed and flowed this whole process. So when we get to the point to where you're no longer, y- y- you're disruptive, that the the protesters were being disruptive. They are breaking the rules, now we have an opportunity to start taking an enforcement action. But then when they were invited to, you don't have to leave. And 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 I was with the deputy D A sitting in the mobile command post, and when those words came across the radio. The the words that came out of, the next words that came out of his mouth is, we no longer have a crime. So that backs us out of this process again, and we kind of have to start over. And and that's why there was what some would perceive as a delay. I also have to remind you, and you brought up the point, Commissioner, there's a sunrise service, there's a rodeo, I think, that was that was brought up. And there's some protesters now that are standing there protesting the event. Absolutely, law enforcement's gonna get called, and we're gonna make sure that there's a a disruption that's going on. But Denver wouldn't be prepared for that, they would have to respond to that. In years past, we wouldn't have been prepared for that, we would have to respond to that. We were absolutely prepared to take criminal enforcement action if we needed to. The other thing that I just wanna bring out is law enforcement is in a con- conundrum right now. Um the minute that we react to something, we are absolutely judged on that action that we take. And I and I can guarantee you that had I marched a team that the that the captain and I. Um had geared up and ready to go, because we were very close to be in there at one point. Had I marched a team of 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 folks dressed in, I call it turtle gear, but. You know, they look like teenage mutant ninja turtles into this event. Um there was going to be not just dealing with the protesters. But it but it's also people react to what we're doing. And we would have had more than just the those in the white shirts that we would have had to deal with.
Exactly.
So those are, those are all things that are running through. Operational commander on this scene to make sure that if we can go through de-escalation tactics. I'm gonna do that every time before I take enforcement action. And so that's why there may have appeared to be a little bit of a delay. But I can also tell you that had we not had the people on scene, it would have been twenty minutes just for enough people to respond to that event. To even start those negotiations as to how it is that we're going to move forward, so. Um a lot, a lot of work went into this um event prior to the event. A lot of work went into the event during the event, and obviously, a lot of work has gone on after the event, so.
If I could, chief, thank you for that, and that that's one of the reasons that. Anya, to your point, why we wanted to have this meeting is to kind of walk through the purposes and intents that law enforcement had. And I really see it through the lens uh uh of our our law enforcement here, I mean, the foresight wisdom and thoughtfulness to not. Overreact, but to be on scene and so prepared, you can see it in their eyes, I mean, it was a lot of time, effort and energy. To make sure that that went as well as it did, and I I get your point, sir, that and yours as well, that maybe things weren't as ideal as we had hoped, but. Considering the circumstances, I am very pleased with law enforcement.
I I'm gonna clarify, if it wasn't, if it hasn't been clear, we don't come here with a single complaint about what law enforcement did on that day. Not a single one. Everything you did was phenomenal, we think your 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 preparation, we think your actions, we think your reactions. Everything was exactly what we could have asked for. The reason I wanted to have this meeting, actually, was to have a discussion um about what steps can we take next year? So that we never have to de-escalate, we never get to the point of needing de-escalation. Because we are able to direct people who want to protest to the designated protest zone. And that our event can move forward so that people aren't in danger, so that there isn't this, that's, I think, what the productive conversation is. And you know, that I I I I'm hearing things, you know, I I was there that day, uh um. And you know, I I I'm hearing things that that we did, that complicated your job. Certainly, we did from a perspective of ourselves, trying to de-escalate, uh trying to get things moving, you know. Uh uh one of our biggest concerns is the longer these, the longer these people interfere with this event, the angrier our crowd is gonna get. And that's just, nobody wants, nobody wants that, so I, you know, I, but I think really kind of that kind of discussion about. You know, kind of specific security measures that we would like uh to discuss uh and and possibly to implement for next year. Um uh in 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 two particular areas, just to get clarification uh moving forward. And as well as maybe some policy changes that might actually facilitate this um and make it an easier uh job for 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 us. And and possibly, hopefully, for you all as well.
So councillor, thank you for that, and I think that's where, as a board of county commissioners, we're really just trying to listen. Uh listen, listen, listen to all citizens, law enforcement, Pride Fest, those that um don't necessarily agree with Pride Fest. To try to arrive at the best decision, so for us, I go back to the hypothetical that my colleague raised around, you know. Red Rocks and an Easter service, what does that look like? And when an organization avails itself of a public space. What are the boundaries and restrictions that are appropriate and and inappropriate, frankly, in that particular uh no use? So I'm thinking, you know, at least as one commissioner, I don't like the idea of a public facility being used and then. Members of the public being told that they cannot attend or participate, and so I I hear your point.
Because we knew ahead of time who these people were, we knew who was coming, we knew exactly how to spot them. The ability to prevent someone you know is going to misbehave from entering is vital going forward, or this discussion can't go any further.
Well, you use a word, you use, hey, one at a time, you see, use the word misbehave, and so from my perspective, I think if we had our fair and rodeo. People show up with t-shirts that say all all kinds of things, and there'll be front row, back row, middle row, right on the side with. T-shirts that I wouldn't necessarily agree with, but we don't tell them that they can't be there because they bought a ticket, they show up. So I I will tell you as one, I was not, um I I don't think it's appropriate to tell the Jenny Graham's group, they can't wear t-shirts and show up at a public event. So maybe narrower, I mean, it it's what I'm hearing you say, councillor, is you want to see a dedicated space for protest, I'm not saying I agree with that.
We just wanna be able to say you belong over there.
It 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 it's a time, place and manner restriction, uh and it's fundamental to 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 to. Public state, that your right to speech does not entitle you to a right to keep other people from speaking, particularly in. You cannot have as part of your protest rights, the interference with and stopping of an event, that is not protected speech. That is trespass, right? That, so that's what we're talking about, we are talking about people who had made clear their intent to interfere with an event. Before they arrived and having the ability to leave those people out, just like you all very. And thank God, honestly, I saw those idiots coming down the hill, uh uh direct the, no, I. Uh direct them to the to the protest, the the you were, you all were there right then. You rolled up high and deep and you directed them to where they were supposed to go, and there was no incident. And that's all we're discussing, uh you know, that's that's the kind of of free de-escalation that we're talking about. Is, you know, I I I'm not talking about, you know, excluding, though though I think when somebody has interfered with an event. Probably it's appropriate for them to be excluded from that event, it uh moving forward. Um but, you know, I I, just like I would expect if, you know, I went to the rodeo and and, you know, somebody. Okay, I'm gonna remove me, so nobody has to picture it, but somebody else went to the rodeo and streaked across the the fairgrounds to interfere with a thing. I would actually kind of expect them to be barred from the fair, not just for the rest of the day, but moving forward.
So let me, let me just ask, I as a former law student, now attorney now commissioner, I think I always like Socratic. Working through a hypothetical, if if Jimmy's group or another group showed up in t-shirts and they were not disrupting the performance, but stayed seated. Is that legally permissible, is that, because I I get your point, that you have a a designated group that would say, they self identify as protesters. What about those that just say, I I'm just wearing a t-shirt? That stay seated, and I'm genuinely asking.
If they went through the proper process to get gain admission, whether it's ticket or whatever, I would be very hard pressed to take a case to court. For someone saying, I love, or God loves you on a shirt, but I mean, that's a tough one to explain to someone for.
This obviously isn't, just obviously doesn't raise your hand and wait your turn, so I'm just gonna speak like they've been doing.
We're gonna go one at a time.
Is that my turn yet?
After Mike.
So if if I were to show up at a church event and said, with a shirt that says, all priests are child abusers, that would be. that would be rightfully inflammatory speech, potential incitement for violence. And even if I'm just sitting there, the the implication, it is inflammatory speech. It'd be like showing up at a gathering of of Jewish people in a swastika. It is the same level, because while they weren't there to perpetrate violence that day, it's the same rhetoric that gets people from our community killed every single day. Jimmy.
It's very dramatic, but if you interrupt, correct me if I'm wrong, law enforcement, if you interrupt a religious service, that's actually a felony. So there's the difference. If you're talking about a sunrise service or something like that, we're not talking about that. You belong here is an invitation. Read their invitation. It's to everyone, because you're inclusive when it suits your needs. So we came not with the intent to go up front. We were invited. That actually surprised me. Art wanted to be cute and say, you're invited up front. So that's cool. So so we came up and did it, right? And we were with Ashley, and I do have a, it's my turn, my turn. Thank you. Then we were invited to stay. Like I said, I have it on record. I'm standing there with the officer, which is fully recorded with Michael. Very respectfully comes up, says, yeah, stay. And I said, can we go in the aisle? He said, go in the aisles. One, two, three, like this? Yeah, one, two, three, like that. Then we did it. Then we left. You know why we were arrested? Because we didn't break the law. Right? When we were invited to stay, we stayed. When it was time for us to leave, we left. There's the difference. I would say next time, for if we if we really are here trying to figure out the truth and what are we going to do for this, I would say when a guy walks through the door, don't say, bad guy coming in, bad guy coming in, for real guys, front gate, bad guy coming in, right? If you're talking de-escalation and de-conflict, which we teach and we learn, uh wrong way to start the conversation, right? And put in and then and having obscenities, having uh literally a a a miter. Uh these are investigations are going, oh, guys, the truth will come out. It takes a minute. You guys had at me for a week because I was off columns in the mountains. I didn't have any radios. The truth will come out in this deal. Just make sure on the right side of right. If you want help to talk about security, I mean, they don't need it. They know what to do here. But a law wasn't broken. Why did you arrest them? They didn't break the law. Because we're peaceful. We were going to go violent and kill everybody. We didn't have any guns. You had the knives and guns and everything. We we didn't, how so?
Yeah.
So I want to be, I want to say very clear. You are not invited next year at all. If you show up, it is trespassing. Thank you. Is that legal?
Guys, let's just, let's keep it, keep it calm.
Is that legal for an open event?
One at a time. What I will say is that
Slowly, no.
Just just being there in person. Um there were moments where I saw both sides really use their level best to be peaceable, calm, and respectful. I also, to be honest, some moments where both sides said, that's a horrible person, that's horrible, you know, and there were some really, there were some negative nasty things said said on on both sides. And I think at the end of the day, when we don't assume best intentions and we treat each other with disrespect, it does create a level of vitriol that makes it very difficult to have a positive event. I mean, even here in this room, I think if we just assumed best intentions, I know Amy, I know uh I mean, I've I've known Jimmy for for years. I've known Pride Fest for a while now. Everybody in this room, especially law enforcement, is committed to the safety of the people in our community. You all love our community, and you all love our kids. You may not know that you both shared that view, but you do. And I believe in each and every one of you, especially the men and women in blue, that spent their days serving us. So I I think the purpose of today is to to think about how we can move forward productively, not limit anybody's right to freedom of speech, um but allow for a peaceable event at a public venue, Mike.
So I think the key in that space, and I appreciate the bridge you're trying to get there. I absolutely do. You saw, you saw me work with people who were willing to talk and willing to negotiate. We worked out, you know, the deal with Kirk Hall and things like that. But when the the dialogue starts with, you're here to hurt children, because that's what's implied by protect the children, is you're here to hurt children. You can't build a bridge from that point until you address the lie that we're there to hurt children.
You know, like, hold it at that moment. I I saw the shirts and I said to Art, I said, you know what's really cool? You're here to protect kids too. Everybody here is to here to protect kids. I I think there are much more offensive things that we could have seen on T-shirts and, you know, it was, I I was impressed.
Anya had a point she wanted to jump in.
Oh, okay.
So I'll just keep this really brief. I think feelings are hurt. I think they're hot. I think they're emotional. I think there's a lot of judgment going on here. There are people making assumptions about me. I have had to put in high-end security because of your parasol patrol trying to dox me, and that is something I have had to do. So in all fairness, we have to have open and honest considerations. I don't care which way a person is. I care about how they are conducting themselves. I don't have any ill will towards Castle Rock Pride. I walked in, sitting there, minding my business, observing, and yes, I was one of the people that had vitriol thrown at them for about five hours. And that, to me, really hurts. I'm not associated with Jimmy Graham. I barely, I've seen him around town. I've never even had coffee with the guy. I've had people throw me into that camp and say I'm a Christian, white supremacist extremist. People do not know me. And this has hurt. I wouldn't go to your homes. I wouldn't demand you guys upgrade your security. I don't have that hate in me.
Well, Amy, thank you for that. And I think what what's awfully surprising, maybe to many of us, is that everyone has a sense of hurt. And feeling like one side is saying, you're the bad guy. And what I know to be true is that each of you wants what's best for our community, Anya.
Let me make something clear. We purposely made sure there was quite a barrier before you walked in. We purposely had people register. We purposely had a back check. We slowed people down. Because last year, we heard people say, we showed up and had no idea what was going on, and we did not want our kids seeing. No one has to be there. We are on public property, but we are not out on the street. We are not in festival park. Anyone who is there, I am so sorry that people were rude to you. I need to say that parasol patrol and us are two different organizations. They are not our parasol patrol. That is a one hundred percent separate organization. But I also need to say, I have been in meetings with you, and I have heard things that you have said about me and people that I love. I have heard that, Amy, because I have been in the room. So
I didn't refer to you.
You, if you don't want, if you are not into it, please don't come.
Well.
I don't say that to anyone. If it is not appropriate for you and your family, please don't come.
So so thank you for expressing that. Let me, let me ask our county attorney um executive session at this point, or how are, how would people like to move forward in this meeting? I know we're not, we don't have a unlimited amount of time.
And less scheduled for this meeting. Um I think that if we wanted to have further discussion about security or policy changes, we probably have to schedule it.
Yeah. Well, I think it's been a very um authentic, real, productive. Even though it maybe has not felt incredibly productive, I think it's really difficult to hate somebody when you see them face to face. And I'm really thankful that everyone had the courage to to show up and see each other face to face today. Um I I think if you're open to it, Board of County Commissioners, Laura, if you agree, I'd, we'd be more than I see nodding head. We're welcomed, uh we would welcome you to another session to have a a discussion around policies moving forward. But Art, you wanted to, yep?
Okay, I offer this because to your point, Jimmy, and to every person who came to say that last year what they saw was inappropriate, I agree with you. We continue. We have said that message from one week, one day after last year's Pride Fest. It was inappropriate. From going forward, please use this year's drag show as the model for what Castle Rock Pride would like to present to Douglas County as a G-rated drag show appropriate for all children. This is, this drag show this year is fully what we intended it to be. No nudity, no raunchy lyrics, no gyrations, sexual moves, total enjoyment, family-friendly. So we acknowledge last year's drag show was not what we wanted to present. We would ask from this moment forward, you use this year's drag show with our new revised procedures as the standard for what Castle Rock Pride would choose to present in any venue in this county.
Art, thank you with that. And just to be respectful of time, we'll adjourn for today and plan to, yes, yes, Commissioner.
Let me just say that I appreciate everybody being here. But I think that if there are questions going forward between the sheriff's department and Pride on how you can do an event next year with security things in place, so the distraction does not happen, then I don't think we need to have a formal meeting with the commissioners. I think that's just a security-type meeting that you guys probably do with the public on different events. And I think that we move on, we we've set our piece, and that people then can set their own security plans going into the future.
Thank you, Commissioner. I appreciate that. Thank you, everyone, for joining us.